Good morning Prince George's County.
Good morning.
It's a beautiful day. And I really want to start off by thanking the Oxen Hill Marching Band, the Clippers, for all the music that they gave us while we were taking our seats. Thank you. Good morning and welcome to the Administration of the Oath of Office for Prince George's County Executive and the elected members of the County Council. In the words of our County Executive, Rasharion El Baker III, "It is a great day to be in Prince George's County," isn't it?
Yeah.
And the sun's being blocked. That was... And now ladies and gentlemen, I have the distinct honor and privilege of welcoming to the stage council members, council members-elect, and the County Executive who will be sworn in today. Now I'm asking you please to stand and please refrain from applause until the end because we've got some family members, and this is a really special moment for the council and the exec, and we want to make sure we applaud at the very end, okay? First, Prince George's County Council Member Mary A. Lehman, representing District One, and she's joined by her daughter Allison Lehman. Security. Prince George's County Council Member-Elect Denny Taveras, and she's joined by guest State Senator Victor Ramirez. Prince George's County Council Member-Elect Danielle M. Glaros, District Three, and she's joined by her husband Steve Glaros. Prince George's County Council Member-Elect Todd M. Turner, District Four, and he's joined by his wife Anita Turner. Prince George's County Council Member Andrea C. Harrison, District Five, and she's joined by her husband Charles Harrison. Right on the bells, way to go Andrea. Prince George's County Council Member Derek Leon Davis, District Six, and he's joined by his wife Sherri M. Davis. Prince George's County Council Member Karen R. Tolles, District Seven, and she is joined by her mother Brenda Tolles. Prince George's County Council Member Obie Patterson, District Eight, and he is joined by his son Alonso Patterson. Prince George's County Council Member Mel Franklin, from District Nine, and he's joined by his wife Monique Franklin. And Prince George's County Executive Rasharion El Baker III. And he will join his wife Krista Beverly Baker and his mother Carolyn Baker onstage. Now we can give them a round of applause. Okay, and now that everyone has graced the stage, let's officially begin our 2014 installation ceremony. Please be seated. Thank you Corporal Jeff Walden from the Prince George's County Police Department for that beautiful solo. Let's give him another round of applause. So I'm Senator Doug Peters, and I'm your Master of Ceremonies today, on this day, Monday, December 1st, 2014, and this is the 12th installation ceremony ushering in our county's returning elected officials and newly elected officials to the executive and legislative branches of the Prince George's County Government. Prior to becoming a state senator, I served here in the county as a county council person. I was sworn in 12 years ago, and it was a great honor then, and it is a great honor now, and I'm seeing things through a different lens in terms of being the master of ceremonies. Thankfully, the clouds have given me a lens as well. This county has come very far in the last eight years, and there's no place to go but to greater heights. And Dr. King once said, "A genuine leader is not a searcher for consensus, but a molder of consensus." At this time, I'd also like to acknowledge our language interpreter for today, and that's Carrie Quigley. Let's give her a round of applause. At this time, I'd like to bring up to the podium Reverend Saroz Sanga. He's the pastor of Chevrolet United Methodist Church, and he will deliver the invocation. Reverend?
What a beautiful day, and in the words of the psalmist, "Bless the Lord, oh my soul; all that is within me bless his holy name. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and forget not all his great benefits." Let us bow our heads in prayer in thanksgiving to God. Open our eyes, oh Lord, that we may see the needs of others. Open our ears, that we may hear their cries. Open our hearts, oh God, so that we may help others without counting the cost. Let us not be afraid to defend the weak because of the anger of the strong. Let us not be afraid to defend the poor because of the anger of the rich. Show us, oh God, where love and hope and faith are needed, and use us to bring them to those places and to the people. Help us, and especially Mr. Rasharion Baker, to bring justice, peace, order, stability, and hope to all the people in Prince George's County and beyond. This is our prayer this morning. We commit him, his family Krista Baker, and the children, and the extended family into your care. Guide him and show him your path. Give him the strength that he needs to guide us all. All this we ask in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you for that uplifting prayer. Now I would ask for the presentation of colors to move forward. Our Public Safety Color Guards represent police, fire EMS, sheriff, and the corrections departments for their joint presentation of colors. We will now hear from the Sutland High School Choral Ensemble as they sing the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last beating? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? For the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the boughs were singing: "In cool true lights, where the flagstaff was still there! Oh, say, nought shall starstake o'er that blue sky! For the banner of the free and the home of the brave!"
Please remain standing as we will have Ms. Giselle Ramirez, a second grade student at Robert Frost Elementary School in New Carrollton, Maryland, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And we have her stool also.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to acknowledge some special guests and elected officials, and those who have come across the continent to bear witness to today's installation ceremony. First, the person who's come farthest, the Chief of Protocol, a representative of our sister city, the royal Bafo King Nation in South Africa, sorry, is here for the ceremony, and we are grateful for his presence today. Where are you? And he is joined by former council chair Dorothy Bailey, who was the emcee four years ago. Thank you Dorothy for coming out. Let's start with our elected officials. Congressman Steny Hoyer is here. Thank you Congressman Hoyer for coming out. Congresswoman Donna Edwards is here. Thank you for coming out Donna. Okay. Let's go to our statewide officials. Lieutenant Governor Anthony Brown. Class act. Let's next go to our state senators. If they could stand please, be recognized. You're going to be recognized as a group. Benson Curry Pinsky, myself Victor somewhere. There you go Victor. Okay. And our members of the House of Delegates. Where are you? Please stand. Our countywide officials, Angela Alsabrooks, State's Attorney. Prince George's County Sheriff Melvin Hi. And our Register Will Serita Lee. Would of all our municipal officials, please stand. Thank you for coming out today. How about our Prince George's County School Board members? Could they stand? Thank you for what you do. Appreciate it. Our Central Committee, if they could please stand. No whooping. No whooping here. Our Judges, if they could please stand. Secretary of State, if he could please stand, John McDonough. Okay. Your presence and support is greatly appreciated, especially amidst your busy schedules. And now I'd like to acknowledge Northwestern High School JROTC cadets who have helped with today's ceremony by assisting and directing you to your seats. Okay, let's acknowledge our outgoing council members and thank them for their dedicated public service, their visionary leadership, ingenuity, and of course constituent service. Former Chair and my council member Ingrid Turner, District Four. Former Vice Chair and Council Member Eric Olson, District Three. Vice Chair and Council Member Will Campos from District Two. I don't think he's here today, but he's here with us in spirit. Thank you. Oh, well there he is, way in the back. Well. He's with the Oxen Hill Marching Band out there. Okay. Well, guess what Will? That's where you're going to sit when you become a House of Delegates. You're going to sit a hundred in the back. It's 141 of them, okay? Sorry, but I'm going off script. I said I wasn't going to do it. Promised, I promised. Okay. At this time, I would like to welcome Sidney Harrison, Clerk of the Circuit Court, to the podium, to my left. It's got your name right there. And I'll be calling each council person up after the fire to be sworn in, and they're just going to bring their whole family. Take your time, this is your day, okay? And we'll bring you up by District Four. You ready?
Yes.
Okay. Mary A. Lehman, District One, Prince George's County Council Member and her family.
Please repeat after me, and please state your name. I?
I, Mary A. Lehman.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will support the Charter?
And that I will support the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County?
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Council Member District One?
Execute the office of Council Member District One?
For Prince George's County?
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state?
And laws of this state.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County?
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations. Councilmember Lehman, I'm going to give you this commission signed by the Governor of the state of Maryland, and just wanted to make sure that you had that in your presence, okay? Thank you so much.
Next, Denny Taveras, District Two, Prince George's County Council Member-Elect and her family.
Okay, Victor. Senator Ramirez. All right, please place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand.
All right.
Please repeat after me and state your name, please. I?
I, Denny Taveras.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And the laws thereof.
That I will support the Charter?
That I will support the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County?
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Council Member District Two?
The what?
Execute the office?
Execute the office?
Office of Council Member District Two?
Of the office of Council Member District Two.
For Prince George's County?
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state?
According to the Constitutions and laws of this state.
And the Charter and laws of Prince George's County?
And the charters and laws of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Thank you. (LAUGHTER).
Good job. Yes. Here's your commission.
She was actually correct. In a couple of weeks, she's going to be saying the what? Off script again. Bad. Next, Prince George's County Council Member-Elect Danielle M. Glaros and her family, District Three.
Please place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me, and please state your name. I?
I, Danielle Glaros.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And the laws thereof.
And that I will support the Charter?
And that I will support the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County?
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality and prejudice.
Execute the office of Council Member District Three?
Execute the office of Council Member District Three?
For Prince George's County?
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution and laws?
According to the Constitution and laws?
Of this state?
Of this state.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
And laws?
And the laws.
Of Prince George's County?
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have a commission signed by the Governor.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations. Next, Prince George's County Council Member-Elect Todd M. Turner, District Four, and his family.
Please place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Please repeat after me, and please state your name. I?
I, Todd M. Turner.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will support the Charter?
That I will support the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County?
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Council Member District Four?
Execute the office of Council Member for District Four.
For Prince George's County?
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Of this state?
Of this state.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County?
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have a commission signed by the Governor. All right, thank you. Next, Prince George's County Council Member Andrea C. Harrison, representing District Five, and her family.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Please place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Please repeat after me and please state your name. I?
I, Andrea Harrison.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Thereof.
Thereof.
And that I will support the Charter?
And that I will support the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Councilmember District Four? District Five, I'm sorry. District Five, for Prince George's County.
Execute the office of Councilmember for Prince George's County, District Five.
For Prince George's? According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Of this state.
Of this state.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County. Thank you.
Better watch out, District Five's coming into District Four, so be careful. Happens. Okay. Next, Prince George's County Councilmember Derrick Leon Davis, District Six. Of course, he wants to be different. He's bringing his staff up and his beautiful wife. Please place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Please repeat after me and state your name. I?
I, Derrick Leon Davis.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will support the Charter?
And that I will support the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office?
Execute the office.
Of Councilmember District Six?
Of Councilmember District Six.
For Prince George's County.
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations, sir. Next, Prince George's County Councilmember Karen Renee Tolles, from District Seven, and her family. Good morning. Please place your left hand on the Bible. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me and please state your name. I?
I, Karen Renee Tolles.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will support the Charter?
And that I will support the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Councilmember District Seven?
Execute the office of Councilmember District Seven.
For Prince George's County.
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Thank you, that was perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Give me a kiss.
Congratulations. Next, Prince George's County Councilmember Obie Patterson, the man with no middle name. He can borrow one of mine. And his family.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. How you doing? Let me get my grandbaby up here. All right.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah.
Please place your left hand on the Bibles.
You gonna hold it?
Raise your right hand. Please repeat after me and state your name. I?
I, Obie Patterson.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will support the Charter?
And that I will support the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Councilmember District Eight?
Execute the office of Councilmember District Eight.
For Prince George's County.
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
And laws?
And the laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next and last, in District Nine, is Mel Franklin, from the Prince George's County Council, and his family.
All right, all right. Gang's all here.
Great. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
All right. Please raise your right hand. Place your left hand on the Bible. Please repeat after me and state your name. I?
I, Jamel Ramon Franklin.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution?
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And that I will be faithful?
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance?
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws?
And laws.
Thereof?
Thereof.
And that I will support the Charter?
And that I will support the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill?
To the best of my skill.
And judgment?
And judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Councilmember District Nine?
Execute the office of Councilmember District Nine.
For Prince George's County?
For Prince George's County.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of this state.
And laws of this state.
And the Charter?
And the Charter.
And laws?
And laws.
Of Prince George's County.
Of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now, let's give all our county council members a round of applause. Let's also give Clerk of the Circuit Court Sidney a round of applause, it's her first time. Don't tie, don't tie, don't tie. At this time, I'd like to invite back our newly sworn-in councilmember, Mel Franklin, and Chair of the County Council, who will give us his vision of the county council.
All right. Well, good morning. And welcome to my fellow residents and inaugural ceremony guests. My colleagues and I have just taken an oath to uphold the Charter of our beloved Prince George's County. It's our solemn covenant with each of you, and we are committed to fulfilling that promise. On this day, with reverence and humility, I'm reminded of the first words of the Charter, that we, the people of Prince George's County, grateful to Almighty God for our civil and religious freedom, desiring to preserve and extend that freedom to all our citizens, recognize that all political power originates in the people. Indeed, we stand before you in this place, on this December morning, by the grace and will of God Himself, as thankful servants of we, the people of Prince George's County. In this endeavor, we do as we must, ask and seek God's wisdom, mercy, and guidance in all that we do. We pray that we always remain on the side of the Almighty and know that while our time in this world is limited, His love and greatness is endless and everlasting. And we will need His help for the critical work of serving we, the people of Prince George's County, during times of economic recovery and budget uncertainty. It's never easy. But in this particular moment in history, we stand at the precipice of greatness for our beloved county. We indeed serve at the pleasure and consent of the people. In a democracy, there must be no separation between the government and its people. Our voice is not simply ours to do with as we please. It is your voice, and we will never forget that. We are honored by your faith and confidence in us to be humble employees of we, the people of Prince George's County. Thank you. To all of you who've joined us here today, elected leadership, including those who I share the stage with today, our family members, honored guests, friends and neighbors, we are privileged and honored that you've chosen to be a part of this very special event. I would like to take a moment and thank our hard-working inaugural committee for producing this wonderful event. Absolutely, give them a big round of applause. A lot of work went into what you see before you. I would also like to especially thank the employees of our county government, in particular, those in the legislative branch. Our employees work tirelessly, each and every day, to make the impossible into the possible and to make the difficult look easy. And we cannot thank them enough for their talents and love of our great county. This is a blessed and joyful day, not only because of the weather, because we all remember four years ago, but it's made all the more so because we are sharing it today with our family and friends who make it possible for those of us who dedicated our lives to public service to do so. They deserve our special recognition and acknowledgement for the vital role they play in our lives. Absolutely, let's give them a big round of applause. For me personally, I would like to thank my wonderful wife, Monica, and our children, Jamel Jr. and Alexis. Thank you for your love and support, for enabling me to do what I do every single day and serve the residents of the people of Prince George's County. Thank you, and I love you. The members of this esteemed body, your county council, are excited to have this opportunity to serve we, the people of Prince George's County. The nine members of the council that you see before you represent a grand diversity of culture and background, language and origin, perspective and talent. And, like four years ago, a majority of our members are women. Our diversity is our strength. It enriches this council just as it enriches our county, state, and nation. The great commonality that unites the nine of us is our passion and love for Prince George's County and our fervent commitment to maximize the near-limitless potential of we, the people of Prince George's County. I am honored to have this great opportunity to serve with each of you. Thank you. Thank you. And we are bringing the world to Prince George's County. Over the last four years, we have begun the work of transforming our county from a bedroom community into a destination for the world. This challenge is one that we have shared with our esteemed county executive, Rashern L. Baker III, who we congratulate on this, his second inauguration. Mr. County Executive, from our shared vision of fostering economic development for the next generation, to our tireless dedication to transforming our public schools, we celebrate your exemplary leadership and our strengthening partnership over the past four years. This council also thanks you for sharing your personal story and championing the cause of ending Alzheimer's, a disease that's touched the lives of countless families across the world. Mr. County Executive, we look forward to building the next great steps on the path to greatness with you over the next four years. Sir, job well done. I would also like to take a moment and acknowledge the legacy and life of former District of Columbia mayor and council member from, from, uh, Ward Eight, Marion Berry. Marion Berry passed away just over a week ago. He rose from being the son of a sharecropper to becoming the mayor for life, and he helped build the middle class here in Prince George's County. Many residents still fondly remember getting their first job through Marion Berry's signature summer youth jobs program. He expanded economic opportunity for minority businesses, the poor and disenfranchised, and youth throughout the region in ways never seen before or since. In his words, "He stood up for the last, the lost, and the least." We salute the public legacy and contributions of Mayor Marion Berry. And we should not proceed with an occasion this grand without first acknowledging those who make it possible for us to enjoy the freedoms that we hold so dear. I've often said that there is no higher form of patriotism than serving in our nation's military. Let us take a moment and applaud the service and sacrifice of our veterans and all members of the military and their families. Four years ago, many of us stood right here, taking our first oaths of office amidst a very different time. It was a time of economic crisis and political turmoil. It was a time of grave uncertainty and external doubt about the future of our great county and its destiny. But, my friends, never doubt we, the people of Prince George's County, because four years later, this county government stands before you more unified, more focused, and stronger than ever before. From establishing ourselves as the place to be for economic development in this region to reducing crime to historic lows, from taking bold, unprecedented steps to reform our school system, to rebuilding our healthcare sector, we are doing big things on purpose to reshape and advance the future of our great county. And we have not yet accomplished all, or even most, of what we came here to do, far from it. But through bold leadership and persistent teamwork, we all together have laid a foundation of change upon which we, the people of Prince George's County, can build a renaissance like none ever seen before. As we look to the next four years, it requires us to envision the next forty. Gone must be the times of short-term thinking, frivolous distractions, and limited foresight. This is a time, like none seen before, for serious leadership and committed partnership that supersedes artificial silos or old turf rivalries. We simply do not have time to waste. Our moment is here, right now, for us to seize, but it will not wait for indecisive or unsteady leadership. As the Reverend Martin Luther King Junior said, "We are now faced with the fact that tomorrow is today." We are confronted with the fierce urgency of now. We, the people of Prince George's County, deserve a bold and inclusive vision of greatness of what our county can be, a vision that transforms us from simply a bedroom and consumer community into being an ownership and opportunity community. We want to foster the great economic development and jobs of tomorrow's economy, but we also want to ensure that we expand local wealth and housing and prosperity for the residents of this great county. We must not be spectators to our own economic revolution. We must be the architects of it. We, the people of Prince George's County, deserve a vision that charts a bold strategy for innovation and investment within our school system, so that it serves the diverse interests and growing needs of all of our children. Our mission must be to envision a public school system that draws residents to live in our great county from around the world, and then chart a bold path for reading, reaching that goal for all our students, regardless of means or background. The ladder of opportunity in America will always begin with a world-class education for each and every child. And we, the people of Prince George's County, deserve a vision that aggressively plans and invests in our public and private infrastructure, whether it's modernizing and improving our transportation and transit systems, investing in environmental sustainability and healthcare, or committing the resources that our public safety officials need to continue to reduce crime, including domestic violence. We cannot afford to ignore the long-term investments in our future that will create jobs and strengthen our way of life for ourselves and our posterity. Prince George's County's destiny is to be a place where people of diverse backgrounds can prosper if they work hard and commit themselves to excellence. This is a vision of economic inclusion and integration, local ownership, and opportunity. Like our nation, our county is destined to be a land of opportunity, where your only limit is how far you dare to dream. In this moment, I'm reminded of the visionary that was the late county executive, Wayne K. Curry. Wayne challenged us to be prepared for the mantle of leadership and the torch of responsibility. He left we, the people of Prince George's County, in charge of the county that was built by him and those others whose shoulders we stand today. To do right by Wayne, we must rise to the challenge and the awesome responsibility and legacy that he left each of us to lead. In speaking of vision and paraphrasing the words of playwright George Bernard Shaw, the late Senator Robert Kennedy once said, "Some people see things as they are and say, 'Why? I dream things that never were and say, 'Why not?'" My friends, let there be no bounds to the greatness that you dream for Prince George's County. Let there be no horizon that we dare not reach together. We, the people of Prince George's County, expect nothing short than the best that we can be, and the promise of that mountaintop is still to come. May God continue His blessings upon each of you, each of us in Prince George's County.
Thank you, Council Chairman, those were inspiring words, inspiring. And you brought the sun out, but it's gone back again, so maybe the county executive can bring the sun out, we'll see. And now it's your turn, my friend. Just four short years ago, you were elected to the office of county executive in the midst of challenging times that were negatively impacting Prince George's County. Fast forward to today, and your impressive list of accomplishments have lifted that veil, and the results of your leadership have been non-stop. From the new regional medical center in the pipeline for the Largo Metro Station, to your flagship Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative, TNI, to further investigate, investing in the community through the Economic Development Incentive Fund, EDI, to creating an entirely new department called the Department of Permitting Inspections and Enforcement, D-PY, is the county executive of acronyms. And let's not forget his recent leadership in restructuring the school system governance. It's obvious why he was not opposed in his election. He's been a county executive of character, of courage, and of commitment. And at this time, I would like to invite the Honorable Sheila Tillerson Adams, administrative judge, Prince George's County Circuit Court, and Seventh Judicial Circuit to the podium to administer the oath of office for the county executive. Ladies and gentlemen, the Honorable Rashern L. Baker III.
I state your name.
Rashern L. Baker III.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And I will support the charter.
I will support the charter.
And laws of Prince George's County.
And laws of Prince George's County.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
And that I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of county executive.
Execute the office of county executive.
For Prince George's County, Maryland.
For Prince George's County, Maryland.
According to the Constitution and laws of this, laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
And the charter and laws of Prince George's County.
And the charter and laws of Prince George's County.
Congratulations.
Don't start the party. I, uh, I, um, brought up my speech, and it's a good one. And I've only been waiting four more years to give it. Unfortunately, the chair went before me. So we can strike up the band.
Chairman Franklin, thank you for that wonderful remark. Can we give him a round of applause?
My colleagues, members of the county council, can we give them a round of applause? I know we have my good friends from the District of Columbia here today. Thank you very much for being here. My, uh, my fellow Marylanders, and most of all, my fellow Prince Georgians, how are you doing today? Before I get into my remarks, I'd like to, again, thank a gentleman who has given so much to this county in this country, and I can't think of a better friend that we've had in this county in the, one of the highest, the highest office in the state, than our very own Lieutenant Governor, Anthony Brown. Can we give him another round, you had to go, give him another round of applause. You know, we, we are so blessed to have a great congressional delegation that is fighting hard for, for us, and I, one again, just to acknowledge them, if they can stand up again, so we can give them a round of applause. Congressman Horner, Edwards. And finally, it is a great day in Prince George's County, isn't it? You know, as, as the chair was saying, it was a little cold last year, you know, four years ago. It was bitterly cold, if you remember. And I think it's symbolic that today, as we start on these next four years, it is warm. Uh, but I have to tell you, I was warmed by the energy that I felt four years ago, and I'm warmed by the energy that I feel among you today. So give yourselves a round of applause. What a way to start off the inaugural festivities by being in church yesterday, and the good people at Riverdale Baptist, and Pastor Mensah were so kind to us and so welcoming, and gave such an inspirational message. I'd like to give them another round of applause, Riverdale Baptist, please. It's always a fun part for me, I get to acknowledge the people who are responsible for getting me here today. Some of you are happy about that. Some others may not be that happy. But I'd like to start with my mom, who's here today. Hi, mommy. And my father, Rashern Baker Junior, who is here in spirit, we can give him a round of applause. Thank you, daddy. I love you. I am blessed to have, my wife and I, to have three beautiful children. Our daughter, Asia Baker, right over there. Our son, Rashern Leslie Baker IV. And our youngest daughter, Quincy Baker. I asked them to switch the orders of my daughters, because I wanted to say something very special about our youngest. Those of you who, as the council member said, that, you know, my wife has, we as a family, uh, have been dealing with a progression of her disease for two years, when I was county executive, for two years. Our fifteen-year-old took care of her mommy, so her daddy could go to work every day, and so that the people of Prince George's County would not know that we were dealing with tragedy and, and, and hard times at home. She missed dances at school. She always missed the bus. But there was never a night or a weekend when I needed to go out and make an event that you asked me to come to that she did not say, "Daddy, I got mommy." And it was a very hard thing when she got ready to go to college, and she started picking colleges in this neighborhood, and I said, "Sweetie, your mommy wants you to go away, and so does your daddy." But I could not have done this job, and I could not stand here today if it was not for her love and commitment for her mother and her father. And just so you're wondering, you know, I have my brothers who are here, both my brothers are here today. I have my sister, I have my brother-in-law and my sister-in-law, um, I have my cousins, I have my aunts, I have my nephews, I have my niece. Yes, we have a family reunion in Prince George's County. We, as a family, are very blessed to have an incredible, incredible role model. Um, as I said, we lost my father nearly twenty years ago, but my kids, my wife and I have had another Sergeant Major, who has been an incredible role model, one of the kindest, sweetest, nicest individuals I've ever met in my life, and who is truly the love of my wife's. Her father, my father-in-law, Sergeant Major retired, Alfonso Beverly. Thank you, daddy. And last, but certainly not least, the love of my life. I often say this, if you spend any time with me, and I probably say it more than people want to hear it. I tell people that my father inspired me to go into public service. My mommy raised me. But it is my wife who made me county executive, and I could not stand here without her help and support. Look at her smiling. She said, "I had never said the truth." Krista Lynn Beverly, the First Lady of Prince George's County. Anyone who knows me knows that my family is an essential part of my life, as you can see, because we're all here. I could not be standing here without their love and support. They are the greatest, and I want to applaud you and thank you for, you know, making it possible for me to live out, as my wife used to say, "I'm just trying to make you live out your dream, honey." And you did it. So I also want to thank a couple of other folks who made it possible for me to be here, and that is my executive staff. My county administrator, Nick Majet, if you could stand up, my chief of staff, Linda Wilson, and all of my deputy county administrators. If you guys could all just stand up real quick, please. The real work. I see my, uh, uh, former and first CAO of this county, Mike Eriko, and I'd like to give him a special shout-out. I'd also like the cabinet, who have guided this government, our department heads, if they could stand up, we can give them a round of applause. You know, the, the chair talked about me not having an opponent in the primary. It wasn't because of anything I did, it was because of the work that you've done, and I never forget that. Thank you. Finally, I'd like to thank the nearly six thousand employees of the Prince George's County Government, the greatest employees in the world. We, as a county, would not be standing here if it were not for your hard work and your commitment. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you have done to make life better for the people of Prince George's County. I finally want to thank the people of Prince George's County for- I finally want to thank the people of Prince George's County for bestowing upon me a tremendous honor and allowing me something I never thought I would get a chance to do. It took me three times to do it. So y'all should have made this one easy. Y'all will get that later. Allowing me to lead this great county that I love for four more years. Thank you very much. I want you to know that I will do everything in my power to make this county the best it can be. And I also want you to know that I will think about you and your families and to do the best that I can to build a pr- better Prince George's County. Because that is not only my job as county executive, it is our job as a county council to work together to make lives better, not for ourselves, but for the individuals and the people of this great county. And so we will do that. So thank you, the council and the people, for allowing me. So, I stand here today as your county executive, ready to take on the challenges of tomorrow, ready to make a difference, ready to work harder so that we fulfill our destiny. Today, we must begin to look beyond our past and embrace our future. The council chair said, we began this journey four years ago, a journey down what I call the path to greatness. A journey that was filled with peaks and, yes, valleys. A journey where we saw some amazing victories. A journey that was historic and gratifying so that today, that we stand on the firm foundation we built four years ago. A foundation that will catapult us into the future. We have been successful because we stripped ourselves of our petty differences and we re- united ourselves in unity. We linked arm and arm to build a better Prince George's County. Together, we have changed the political culture of Prince George's County forever. Together, we put our challenges behind us and we forged ahead. So here we are, four years later. Not cold. Four years later. I don't know that any of us thought what it would be like four years from now. But I have to say, just think about it for a moment, look at Prince George's County now. Look at us today. We have seized the day, or as my wife would say in Latin, Carpe Diem. Over these last four years, we have built a better Prince George's County, and I dare say, the envy of the Washington region. Together, we have made Prince George's County the place to be. How did we do it? We did it by significantly reducing crimes to levels we have not seen in nearly three decades. And that is our public safety that did that. Give them a round of applause. We did it by improving our schools and our school board and bringing in one of the best superintendents in the nation, Dr. Kevin Maxwell. We did it by, by stimulating our economy with unprecedented levels of development. Whether it's the MGM Destination Resort in, at National Harbor, or the Quintera Development in Laurel, or the new Department of Housing and Community Development that will be built in New Carrollton, or Westfalia Development in Upper Marlboro, or the Key Energy Plant in Brandywine, and hopefully, real soon, the new headquarters of the FBI. We're all in. Councilwoman Turner, we did it by improving access to quality health care. And we're going to build a new regional medical center at the Largo Metro Station. So that we provide quality health care to Prince George's County in the southern region of the state of Maryland. By doing that, we will create a healthcare delivery service, cer- system that will improve access to primary care and help us reduce health disparities. It's a good thing. We made a commitment, and we did it, by expanding our commercial tax base and cre- and increasing jobs by developing, the council and the county executive together took a chance, took a bold chance in a recession, and put $50 million in our economic development incentive fund. And we created, as the chair said, the new Department of Permits, Inspections, and Enforcement, DPI, so that we improve the permitting process and make the county more business-friendly. That deserves a round of applause. We created the Baker Principles so that every employee that's working in this government can be guided for the great work that they're doing. We did it by keeping campaign promises like creating county stat and opening our new 311 Call Center so that we gather information and make data-driven decisions to better utilize our limited resources. We did it by partnering with the county council and, once again, taking a bold step and creating the Office of Ethics and Accountability so that we restore confidence in this government. And of course, we did it by creating our signature program, our Transforming Neighborhoods Initiative, or TNI, as we like to call it. TNI is designed to focus resources and commitment on our six challenging areas throughout this county so that we can better address issues such as crime, health disparities, unemployment, low education outcomes, limited economic development, and high foreclosures. TNI, with our work through there and working with the school system, we have expanded the number of all-day pre-k's in our selective TNI neighborhoods. That is a great thing for us in the county. It is through the TNI program that we have expanded the number of jobs in our summer ju- youth employment, so we get our kids something to do during the summer. That is a great thing. It is through TNI that we have helped secure millions of dollars in grant funding so that we can address issues like healthcare delivery, re-entry for our returning citizens from our correctional system, and providing our children to be college-ready and job-ready. And that is a great thing. Couple of months ago, we launched what we call our marketing campaign so that we can tell the world and the region all of these great things that are going on in Prince George's County. We did it with the tagline, "Experience, Expand, and Explore," which is designed to attract businesses to the county, residents to the county. But more importantly, or at least for me, having people come here for tourism and for travel and spending money is a great thing. So we love that. So we've come a long way in four years. And along the way, we have, um, lost some family and friends that we love very much and that love this county. One of those individuals who loved this county was Wayne Keith Curry. His vision for this county and his work for this county raised our profile locally and nationally. He taught us, he taught us to be proud of this county and the people we represent. This county, this state, this region is better because of his work and his vision. I will miss Wayne. We will miss Wayne. But his love, his wisdom, his strength, and his tenacity will be an inspiration as we move this county forward. I would like to, as you can see, if you look in the front, front row, we have left a seat vacant. Four years ago, in a very cold and windy place as I spoke, Wayne was here supporting the county and me, and motioned to me when I spoke too long. Still in control. I think it is only fitting, I think it's only fitting, as he looks down upon us, that we leave that seat vacant in his memory. And I am so pleased and so honored that his wife, Sheila Curry, is here today. Over a week ago, as the council chair mentioned, we lost another good friend who was here four years ago, and that is Marion Barry, the district's mayor for life. Marion spent his life helping people who didn't know how to fight for themselves. I also was a beneficiary of his summer youth en- employment program. I got my first real job because of his summer youth employment program. And every single time I would see him, he reminded me that he gave me my first real Wayne and, and Marion will be missed. We've lost two great leaders in, in the course of this year, two people who changed this region forever. They will be missed. So as we embark upon the next four years, I think it's time that we do something different. I think it is time for us to reset our GPS and to take a bold new course. My cabinet is really frightened at what I'm gonna say next. No longer will we journey down the path to realizing our full potential in this county. As far as I'm concerned, we have been saying this county has potential for far too long. Today, my fellow Prince Georgians, the people of the state of Maryland, no longer will we go down the path to greatness. We're gonna take the off-ramp. We are now, Mr. Chairman, on the highway to our destiny. You see, Webster describes potential as having the quali- the quality or ability that may be developed and lead, lead to future success. But destiny, destiny, that's something totally different. Destiny is the predetermined inevitable course of events. Ladies and gentlemen, that is what we are on. I believe we journeyed far enough down the path and accomplished way too much to continue to pontificate about untapped potential in Prince George's County. We are better than that. You are better than that. Today, I declare to the state and this region that greatness is not just what we have the potential to achieve. Greatness is our destiny. William Shakespeare wrote, "It is not in our stars that hold our destiny, but in ourselves." So Prince George's County, we must begin to believe, to see, to feel, and yes, work like hell to realize our destiny. We must look forward to the promise the future holds as we build upon our paths. Everybody knows the saying that hindsight is 20/20. It's a saying that means you look at things that you did and, in hindsight, I could have done it better or, or differently. So as we look at hindsight, I'm asking you today, as you look back with 20/20 vision, that you also look forward to the year 20/20 and what Prince George's County would look like. I often talk about how I drive around this county and this region late at night with my wife, when she can't sleep. On sunny days like today, she can. Late at night, I would drive her around to help her sleep. And what we would do is we'd drive through the county, through the district in Virginia, and we'd get a chance to see our destiny of the county. Whether it was going to U Street and looking at the corridor there with the bustling businesses, or whether it was going to Fairfax County and looking at those suburban neighborhoods and their high-quality public schools, I could see in those drives the destiny of this county. We like to call them our destiny tours. Because in those tours around these areas, we could see what Prince George's County would look like. We could see the year 20/20. We could see not only having schools like they have in Fairfax County, but we could see our destiny very clear. So in 20/20, what will Prince George's County look like? In 20/20, we will have a school system that has risen to the top, is one of the fastest improving school systems in this nation and in this state. In 20/20, we will have the best teachers and principals and administrators that are staying here because we've made such tremendous strides in our education system. In 20/20, our regional healthcare facility will be built. And we will begin to make significant improvements in access to quality healthcare, and yes, our primary healthcare network would be rapidly growing, allowing us to reduce health disparities in key areas such as obesity, diabetes, mortality rates, and cardiovascular diseases. In the year 20/20, more of our residents are working here in this county because we've expanded our commercial tax base. And yes, we did get the FBI here in Prince George's County. Mr. Chair, in the year 20/20, residents are choosing to stay in the county, and we are attracting residents from around the region, and they're moving here to Prince George's County. Yes, in the year 20/20, we have built around those 15 underdeveloped metro stations and they're hot properties, and young people and older young people are wanting to come here to those areas. In the year 20/20, we will continue to celebrate the rich diversity which is our population. In the year 20/20, development will continue to thrive, and our residents will have retail options for clothing, for shopping, right here in Prince George's County. In the year 20/20, with those options, our population has grown to nearly a million people. But yet, our transportation system has adjusted to that growth. We have light rail, and county and state roads have better factored in bikers and walkers, making our streets more walkable and bikeable. In the year 20/20, the perception and the reality is that Prince George's County is a great place to live. Because we will be considered a model on how you reduce crime at the same time as reducing That is how I see this county in the year 20/20. The Roman poet Virgil wrote, "Fortune" The Roman poet Virgil wrote, "Fortune favors the bold." What Virgil was saying is that blessings and fortune are the blossoms of what come out of bold and dynamic steps, because it is the bold who take on the hard task. It is the bold who fight the good fight. It is the bold who see their destiny fulfilled. Our destiny is not some unreachable star that we merely gaze upon. No, our destiny is attainable. It is reachable, because it is our time. Prince George's County, we are the generation that knows no bounds. It is this generation that will utilize our diversity and embrace it as our strength. It is this generation that will shatter the myths. It is this generation that will seize the day. It is this generation that will boldly lead our county to our destiny. Greatness. Thank you. God bless Prince George's County. God bless you. God bless Maryland.
Thank you, county executive, for that riveting speech. At this time, we'll have a prayer of inspiration. Please join me in welcoming the county executive's spiritual advisor and friend, Dr. Leonard Hamlin Sr. of Macedonia Baptist Church, to the podium to deliver the prayer.
County Executive Baker, to the county council chair, certainly to the county council members, to the leaders and all who have gathered here on this day, won't you pray with me? Our Father and our God, our Creator, God our Sustainer, God our Redeemer, and God our Keeper, we thank you today for the privilege of coming into your presence on this historic and sincere occasion. Bless us on this day, and bless on this day our county executive, our county council members, in their commitment to serve. Bless them individually and bless them collectively, as they stand as representatives for this county and the people within every community. We come thankful for your presence with us and pray that you might now lift us, empower us, lead us to the heights that we have been prepared for us. We gather together thankful for our coming together and for the opportunity to unite together as we endeavor to serve one another. Bless these leaders who now undertake the task of carving, crafting, and visioning a brighter future. Let them see opportunities while facing difficulties. Let them not judge each day by the harvest that they reap, but let them judge each day by the seeds that they have planted. Inspire their spirit, so that every person may experience joy, peace, justice, and the fullness of life. Provide these leaders the vision to see what can be, the courage to act decisively, and the heart to serve compassionately. Allow these leaders the faith, the voice, and the will to stand for all those who seek to experience the fulfillment of freedoms afforded to all in this county, as well as in this great nation. Let us stand with them, and let those of us who stand beside them support them. Let us encourage them, and let us stir up the gifts that God you have given them so uniquely. And let us, in our own ways, inspire them. Help us as citizens to not be searching for fault, but to assist them in seeking remedies. May we first hold ourselves to a higher standard before holding someone else to another standard. Unite us all together in the spirit of unity. Grant that we might rise above the partisanship that weakens us and embrace a passion for unity among us. Give us the opportunity in this generation to lay the foundation for a brighter tomorrow that is reflective of your glory. Inspire our spirit to be one with your spirit, as Prince George's County moves from where we are right now into the places that many have dreamed of, prayed for, worked for, sacrificed for, and as the children of their labor, of their service, of their hope, of their dreams, and most of all, their faith, may we today lift one another as we serve one another. Help us to step into the places that have been prepared for us with the boldness, the assurance, the vitality, and the joy that will make a better day today and better days yet to come. We ask that you anoint this day as the beginning of a better day and brighter days. And we ask this now, that you would cover us and keep us. In the wonderful name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Dr. Hamlin. We will now have another musical selection from the Sutland High School Choral Ensemble.
John saw the number that no man could number. John saw the number that no man could number. John saw the number that no man could number. Coming up on high. John saw it. John saw the number that no man could number. John saw the number that no man could number. John saw the number that no man could number. Coming up, coming up on high. John saw the 144,000. John saw the 144,000. John saw the 144,000 coming up on high. John saw it. John saw the 144,000. John saw the 144,000. John saw the 144,000 coming up on high. Tell John not to call the road till I get there. Tell John not to call the road till I get there. Tell John not to call the road till I get, till I get there. Coming up. John saw the number that no man could number. John saw the number that no man could number. Coming up. Coming up. Coming up.
Thank you. Forgot to mention one statewide official, Ms. Gloria Lawler, our Secretary of Aging. Where are you, Gloria? In the back. Today, we gather to witness the administration of the oath of office for some extraordinary leaders. This has been an invigorating morning that will lead to many new chapters of progress in our county's history. The people have spoken, their leaders are in place, and we have great expectations. And in each of you, we have great leaders that are ready to serve through good, bad, and indifferent times. County Executive, I want to thank you for this privilege of being the master of ceremonies, as well as my colleagues in the county council. And at this time, I would ask Rabbi Doug Heifetz of Temple Osay Shalom to the podium for the benediction.
Good afternoon. As we lose the sunshine, I know we want to wrap up quickly. My wife might say that the change in weather is a reflection of my personality. Honorable Mr. Baker, county executive, honorable council members, residents of Prince George's County, please join me for a moment of concluding prayer and reflection. May the source of life, the source of strength, the source of compassion, bless those who give their lives to serve the citizens of our county. May our public servants be lifted up, may they continue to be granted vision, may they continue to be given the courage to lead. At this moment of renewed dedication, may we all take much satisfaction and pride in the many steps of progress from recent years. May our public servants feel the support and appreciation of the public, of each of us whom the public servants serve. May our leaders find patience to rededicate their strength to serve our citizens with compassion and with concern. May the eternal grant strength to represent our county with determination and with zeal. In this time of great division and racial injustice in our country, may our public servants, the officials of Prince George's County, lead the way toward a society that recognizes that all are equally created in the image of the eternal, in the divine image, that all are equally deserving of compassion and of restraint in the use of force by those in power. May our leaders especially keep in mind the needs of the poor, the marginal, and those without voices in the halls of power. May we all help, in the words of the prophet Isaiah, "To unlock the fetters of wickedness, to let the oppressed go free, to break off every yoke, to share our bread with the hungry, and to take the wretched poor into our homes, when we see the naked and those in need, to clothe them, and to not ignore the needs of our fellow human beings." We pray for the patients to listen to voices that we may not always wish to hear. We pray for compassion, for strength, and for renewed determination. And together, in the name of the eternal, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Rabbi Heifetz. I want to thank all those staff members who put this program together. If they could stand up, let's give them a round of applause. You did a fantastic job. I also want to thank each of you for coming out today. Here comes the band, okay? This concludes our program. Have a wonderful day.